To make sure that, you know, loose change floating around in somebody's pocket didn't turn into some global science center thing that wasn't necessary. That was actually what drove this paragraph. Um, so, um, I guess my concern is that, I mean, as long as you say building something like that, somebody's, you know, idea, you know, that gets pushed by somebody in administration, um, superintendent or whatever can use that money, use that contingency money to do something that maybe not everybody's real wild about.
Well, it could only be done, anything in the future, spending the contingency could only be done with board approval. I mean, that's, you know.
Well, I mean, that happened last time too, but yeah, okay. No, I don't know how everybody else feels about that, but.
Well, the only, the only thing I would say, sir, is that, is that I think, given the legislative environment and what we could be, um, combating over the next six years, for lack of a better word, I, I, I think, uh, the board is gonna want maximum flexibility. And, and so, I mean, I'll just, I'll just.
Yeah, and I, and I know that we had to be real careful about restricting this, or nobody would be wanting, wanting to invest in the bond either, so, uh, I know there was a balance, but, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Rice.
Mr. Perez, one quick question, are we utilizing competitive seal proposal for the construction contracts?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. So, Dr. Dupree, this, this is gonna cover both of these, the accountability resolution and the.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, on to the next item, six A, one C, proposed order approving a joint election agreement.
And that's just really the agreement with the county to conduct the election.
Okay. Questions or comments? Moving on. Six A, two, review the proposed approval of fiscal and budgetary strategy for the two thousand eighteen nineteen.
So that's an item we bring annually, uh, we, and just in our policy, it's to, the board does need to approve it this year, but we, we have made no changes to our, uh, fiscal, fiscal policy.
Thank you, sir. Next, review the proposed adoption resolution regarding the district's investment strategy.
So the only, the only change that we made to the investment strategy, which is a requirement for us, also by policy is, uh, um, to have the policy, but, uh, um, to allow for the investment of, uh, debt service funds in commercial paper, we have that for the general fund. We just wanna be able to do the same for the general, for the debt service fund, and that's limited to, uh, less than ten percent. Uh, so that's the only change there. The rest of this, uh, item is to identify who, uh, who our brokers are, uh, whenever we do, uh, make, uh, investments. And so these are, you know, folks that we, we talk with, uh, uh, over time to, uh, maximize our investment revenue.
Thank you, sir. Next, review the proposed approval of underwriters to be utilized by the district in connection with future bond debt issues.
All right, so this is also something that we do annually, um, uh, you know, in August, bringing, uh, the, the list of the firms that we would use, uh, as potential underwriters. Uh, this is a, this is not the same every year, I mean, we'll drop, we'll drop firms if they don't perform in our transactions. Uh, we'll add new firms that have, uh, that have proven themselves, uh, through their work with other school districts. Uh, and then there's some that are on there every year because they're doing a good job for us. And so, uh, we have a lot of firms on here, uh, to, uh, to make sure that we're, we're hearing a lot of good ideas and to really to keep up with the market. So we meet with these folks on a regular basis.
Mr. Rice.
Uh, Mr. Bassett, will, uh, will Mr. Frails be reviewing any, uh, transaction documentation with regards to these vendors?
Yes, sir, every time we do, every time we do a bond transaction where we do work with any of these underwriters, for example, the last one was our CTE financing, and I'll, I'll be able to, we'll send a, um, board memo out on that, uh, this week. Um, all of those bond orders and all of the documentation for that, that, all of the documentation associated, it definitely gets reviewed by bond council, yes, sir.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Next, review possible endorsement of candidates to represent region four as a director of the Tasby Board of Directors. Mr. Rice, can you, uh, help with this, please?
Well, each year, there are, uh, certain, certain individuals from smaller school districts who, uh, seek to serve on the Tasby Board. We're from a larger school district, so in the past, you all have voted for me, and in effect, you have elected me to serve on the Tasby Board. That is, a large school district is determined by a formula. All of the individuals that you see on the screen are from smaller school districts, so they're attempting to secure endorsements, uh, in their quest to be elected to the Tasby Board. And I would, uh, I would also, I'll, I'll give you some recommendations, but also, uh, Mrs. James may wish to give you a recommendation because she's serving on the Gulf Coast Area Association of School Boards and is familiar with, uh, at least two of those individuals, and so, from my point of view, uh, George Anne Wrightmeyer has been very active in Gulf Coast Area Association of School Boards. She is a leader, and I think, uh, we get to pick one from each, yeah. Position A and position C would be my recommendation to go with George Anne Wrightmeyer, region four, position A. And then, uh, I know Stephen Dennis and I know Tony Hopkins. Uh, Tony is running, he's currently serving out the remaining term. I was in leadership Tasby with Tony, he's from Friendswood, I think he would be, he would make a good, uh, a good Tasby director as well. Mrs. James, would you care to comment?
Yes, Mr. Rice, I think those are good recommendations, and, uh, George Anne's a previous past president of Gulf Coast Area Association of School Boards, uh, and, uh, currently serve uh, with Tony, and Steve and Tony are both currently on the, on the Gulf Coast Board, but I think, uh, Tony would be a fine choice.
Thank you, Mr. Rice and Mrs. James. Mrs. Tossan, did you have some input?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Berdine. So I would wanna thank both of you for making those recommendations, and I concur. I'd also like to say that George Anne Wrightmeyer, uh, worked with us on the One Voice Coalition during the last legislative session, was very instrumental in that. So I just wanted to throw that out there, and I concur, thank you.
Thank you all very much for your input, we'll be voting on this next week. Um, next, uh, possible approval of official voting delegates at the Tasby Annual Delegate Assembly. Last year, I believe, Mrs. Tossan was... No, I was the alternate. So.
Does that mean you want me to do it again?
Actually, I think I wanna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it this time, if that's okay.
I nominate you, Ben.
If that's okay with y'all.
We'd love to have you do it, too, Ben.
Do I have someone who would like to be an alternate?
I think the vice president should be the alternate.
Too.
Addie?
Second that.
Are y'all going to the annual meeting? I'm not sure when it is, but maybe we should check that first.
September.
Are you going to the Addie? Are you going to the meeting in Austin? I'm sure it's on your calendar. Okay, so I will be the official voting delegate, and Addie, if you can check to make sure you can be there, you can be the alternate. All right, next, board goal one. Review the propose, proposed revisions to local board policy, EHBB Local, special programs. Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rosenthal. Um, Mrs. Sayvater was gonna speak about this first.
I just wanted to kinda introduce that there was extensive work that was done, uh, with policy EHBB Local, associated with the Gifted and Talented Program. Um, the work was initiated by the Gifted and Talented Task Force, um, specifically the Program Devi- uh, Design Subcommittee. Um, they worked, um, and produced, uh, a very comprehensive and extensive policy. Um, staff reviewed the po- policy initially, and we really looked for consistency in terms of formatting, we looked at the flow, and we also looked very specifically at making sure that the policy language was broad enough to really guide, um, future work and, and, and current work in terms of, of programming. Um, from that initial review, um, it went to the Policy Review Committee, uh, in Ju- in June, uh, on June the seventh, and then on June the twentieth, where there was, um, additional, um, edits and recommendations that were made by the Policy Review Committee. Uh, those edits, um, were made by, by staff administration prior to submitting, uh, what the board is, is reviewing, um, this evening, uh, for board approval. Once approval is secured by the board, um, in August, um, at the next board meeting, um, if the board chooses to move in that direction, um, then we would really work on solidifying the draft that's already begun of administrative regulations. So as I opened with, um, the fact that the, the policy was dense and very specific, that some of the verbiage from the policy is really used to inform the work of developing the administrative regulations, which will be taken back to the task force for additional work so that we can finalize those pieces, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Sayvater. Mr. Rosenthal, would you like to speak on this?
Yes, so, um, there were obviously some emails that we got today, and, uh, that were concerned with the fact that the policy was kinda gutted, and so I'd like to address that. So I'd, I'd have no idea what the original charge was for the task force. Uh, I don't know if it was writing policy or procedures, but what we saw really were more, it was more procedural, rather than a broad, uh, guidelines or, or policy. And so, because it's going into board policy, it has to be broad. It, we, we don't, we don't get into procedures because procedures are not policy. Because there's a very, there's a very hard line between board oversight and, and that, because that's what the board does, we, we oversee, and management, and, and we cannot cross that line, and, and it's, there's, there's very good reasons for that. So if the board writes procedures, and those procedures fail, who do you hold accountable? You can't hold the superintendent accountable because he didn't write the procedures, we did. And so, if you can't hold the superintendent and his staff accountable, then why have them? The board can just run the whole show, and we're not the experts, okay? That's not our job. So, um, that's why you saw this, um, this policy get broadened. A lot of those things, it looked like very good work, uh, it was very solid, but that's goes, that's gonna go into your procedure. So that's, that's the explanation, that's what happened, that's why you see what you see. So these are, again, these are board policies, not procedure. So we, we, we try very hard not to get into the weeds, so.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Rosenthal, Mrs. James.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, and thank you, Mrs. Sayvater, for clarifying that, so I would like to say thank you to the GT Task Force for working on that, and the, and the Subcommittee, you mentioned the Program Design Subcommittee, for kind of really fleshing out, um, what, uh, they felt was important. Um, and, uh, I just wanna give you a little background to the board, I guess, of, uh, the things that the Policy Committee felt was important to, um, to have in the, in the, um, in the policy. So one was around the philosophy, um, and that we know that students, uh, we want students to be able to reach their full potential. Um, and that's obviously in our core beliefs, uh, and the committee, when they submitted it to us, had that in there as well. Um, I think that they were also trying to, to, um, identify, and, and Dave and I agreed with this, the needs of the individual students vary, uh, and some need to be pushed, um, in educational and coursework, and some need to be stretched in more social-emotional areas, some in leadership and, and different things like that. So I think that that was our philosophy, that's our broad philosophy statement, and what we were trying to reach in that. Uh, the second part of the policy was around program, uh, and I know some of the comments that we received in email today were around that. The key pieces we felt here were, we have a history in our district of not having equitable access to our Gifted and Talented Program. That was very clear in the notes that the, uh, the Task Force sent us, or didn't really come from them, but however it routed through administration, uh, that was obviously a high priority, and I think that's a high priority for the board as well. The program would be student-centered, um, and that aligned with our goals and making sure that it's student-centered learning. Um, and then a new thing that we, um, felt, uh, kinda added in here is the concept of a learning plan, or at least piloting the concept of a learning plan for Gifted and Talented students. And I know there was some comments in the email we got today about that, well, that was only for new students coming in, or something like that, and I don't necessarily think that that was our intent. I think that it was about, let's, we can't do this all at once, you know, right now, this school year, but let's figure out how we can work on some, like we wanna do for every student, um, having their learning plan be, be student-centered, and Gifted and Talented is a sub, subcategory of students that kind of would lend itself to that, and I think that's what, uh, came out of the committee. Um, another point that was made up, we had to put a lot of things in there for legal, in terms of the assessment and notification, how to appeal the process and all that. One of the points that was brought up about, was about reassessment. So right now, our practice in our district is if somebody's identified in one, in one learning area, um, they are receiving services in other learning areas, and it bec- has become a, from Dave's and my understanding, it's become a cost to reassess some students over and over to get them identified in these other learning areas when they're already more than likely receiving services in those other learning areas, so, or at least our understanding was that they were receiving services, or they had access to services. So we felt this was a cost, um, that we, as a district, didn't need to incur. If we're already providing the services, we don't have it, there's no additional benefit to the child. Um, but that then could be brought into the learning plan concept if there was a clear differentiation in subject matter or subject areas to, uh, receive services. So, uh, that's kind of what we, how this evolved. We had three meeting, and three conversations about this policy over the course of the last couple of months, and, um, I think the things that, um, the other big piece were the le- were the learning opportunities, uh, and the description of the learning opportunities. I looked for some of, uh, we received that in email today, I looked for some of that in the drafts that I'd received, and I didn't see that. So I think that is a piece that you felt was headed for procedures or administrative regulations. So I guess that's my narrative around it, and I think, if Dave, if there's anything else, you can feel free to chime in, but I guess I would ask administration to sort of close the loop then with the Task Force folks to make sure their, um, their concerns are being, uh, addressed in the appropriate way, so. Thank you, Mr. Berdine.
Mr. Rosenthal, do you have a comment?
No, I just wanna thank you for, yes, saying, bringing out some of those points that we discussed, um, especially the fact that, uh, what, what, it seems like, you know, the idea was, was to broaden, broaden the testing, you know, to, to look at kids in not just the core subjects like you brought up, and, and I think that's really important, so. And then, uh, I think the other reason that we, we talked about was cost and efficiency, you know, on our staff, you know, to have to keep, you know, re- retesting kids that were already in the program, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you both for your work, appreciate that. Um, next up, review. Mrs. Tossan.
Thank you, Mr. Berdine. Um, so I just wanted to comment on this, uh, as a parent of a student who's identified gifted, and a parent of a student who's in special education, it's always been particularly important to me that we ensure that we're individualizing education for all children as much as we possibly can. Differentiation is huge, and it shouldn't just be for kids who are identified on either end of the spectrum. Um, and gifted can be as difficult to educate as children with special needs, and I think we all know that, so I just wanted to say, um, first of all, that on the reassessment question, so my daughter, who is identified gifted, is identified in one area, and she does receive G- she, GT services in all areas. So that is something that's happening for my student, but it doesn't mean that it's happening for all students. So one of the, one of the points I wanted to make is that we need to make sure that we're being consistent um, in how we are teaching children who are identified gifted. So it works for my daughter because if we, and I haven't reassessed her in the other areas because she's getting what she needs and she's successful at it, but we're, um, differentiating instruction for her, and her plan is pretty individualized. I would venture to say that that's not happening for every child who's been identified, so. I, I, and maybe this is something we should add to, to this policy, is just to ensure that we're being consistent. And if, if we're only going to, well, the first thing I wanna make sure of is that we're not giving students who are identified in one area are getting, uh, gifted-type instruction and plans in all areas, and it's not meeting their needs. So kids can be gifted in math and not gifted in English, and then we could be frustrating them. So I wanna make sure that that's not happening. Um, and at the same time, if we're not giving the student identified in math the ELA gifted instruction, but they really should be, then, so I think we need to close that hole, that's a hole. Right, and I'm not gonna sit here and try to come up with language or something on the spot. I, I think, uh, you guys have done a lot of the work, and, um, you know, I, I could think about it a little bit more, but I do think that it's a, there's a potential gap there that we need to make sure that we're, um, that we're filling, and that it's being done consistently across the district.
Could I interrupt you just for a second? I li- I, I completely agree with what you're saying, and that's why we talked about the concept of the learning plan.
Right.
Because some students maybe need to even work on their social-emotional learning as a bigger priority than, you know, doing advanced projects or something like that, because they're not that good at working with others, so that's where their greatest need is. So that's kind of where, how we talked about that, so I agree, I think there's some centering on the, if the learning plan can be a real thing, which, which I'm hopeful that it can be, then I think it, it meets that need. The other point you brought up, though, is the consistent implementation. And we talked about this a lot, we talked about identif- identifying equitably, serving equitably, and there is, there's, we have some implementation gaps, but I think that that goes to Dr. Dupree and Mrs. Sayvater's responsibility to make sure that things are consistently implemented. But if you feel like there's a place to put a sen- sentence or phrase in, must be someone's bedtime. Anyway, I don't, I, I understand, and I agree with you on the consistency. I don't know if that's a given, we expect our policy to be implemented, so, uh, with consistency and with fidelity, um, it's.
Yeah, so for me, it's more, I just wanna make you guys aware of it, that it's not being done, and I don't know if, uh, and, and I'll sleep on it and think about it, maybe there's some language that can be put in there as far as accountability goes, and maybe not. Maybe we just need to make sure that we get it into the procedures, but as far as the learning plan goes, I, I do think it's a good idea to maybe take the word newly out of that sentence of newly identified, just because we wanna make sure that every student's getting a learning plan. And even if it's not something we can do for every single student right at the outset here, I think that needs to be our goal. Cause that's really, truly what we are supposed to be doing, is, is having a learning plan for every single child. So I'll just throw that proposal out there, and, and, um, if you guys agree with it, that, that might, that might, um, fix that, that it's, not just for the newly identified, but for, but for all of our students. And then the last thing I'll say is, um, I was glad to hear that you're gonna go back to the committee, cause reading some of what was drafted, I wholeheartedly agree with, especially as a parent. I mean, these are things that, that I've either had to fight for or push for, ensure that are happening myself over the years, and so I think these are things that absolutely need to be in procedures, and, um, so I do wanna make sure, and nobody's gonna know better than the parents who are, that's the whole reason we have the committee. Um, so I, I wanted to validate them and validate that, and make sure that we are getting those things into procedure. So, thank you guys for your work on it, too.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Tossan. Next item, six B three. Sorry, six B two, review of proposed avid membership and professional learning plan.
Yeah, I did have one question on this one.
Mrs. Tossan.
Um, looking at the memo, I'm trying to get to it, sorry, guys. I, I just wanna make sure that, um, it looked like, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the memo.
No problem.
I lost it, I may have just closed it. Um, you, we were looking at who, where we were gonna be rolling this out in the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year, a- and I just wanted to make sure that I was reading the chart correctly, that Thornton Middle School's gonna have this, as an, I know, as a new middle school, I wanted to make sure. Yes, ma'am. It was gonna open with the avid program. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tossan. Next, six B three, review the proposed purchases exceeding fifty thousand dollars. Classroom technology toolset, lending library. Comments? Moving on, performing and visual arts organizations and related services. Mrs. Tossan.
Do we not partner with the Fort Ben Symphony? Is that one of the, they weren't on the list. I was just curious, cause they're in our backyard.
I don't have it down on the list, but I can check on that.
I, yeah, check on it, please, cause they're, I, I mean, they're a good local resource, I just, it's just a question, thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, could you give an example, uh, of, talked about a teaching artist to teach core subjects? What would be an example of that?
I can speak to that. It's a partnership we have with the Alley Theater, um, where they come in with, they bring actors, and, but they teach STEM at the elementary school, and they teach the teachers how to use, um, theater arts and, and that skill set to teach STEM and some of those more complex subjects where students engage in acting while they're learning those concepts. I've observed it in action, it's a very.
I was gonna try that two years ago when I was, but I didn't, I didn't have the guts.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Next, six C one, review the proposed approval of the two thousand eighteen nineteen student code of conduct. Did we have a presentation, Dr. Dupree, or? I guess so, okay. Mrs. Halliger?
I just made a quick comment, I have read through this, and I, and I'm liking most of the changes that, that I've seen. I just wanted to kind of give you all those kudos, so I think i- it aligns with the culture that we're trying to build here in, in our district, so just, some of, some of the changes, not, you know, just reiterating some of those things when I read it over again this time, it just, I'm glad we made some of the changes that we have, so.
I would agree with that, it is a lot of good work. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, I just have one, one quick one. Um, on the definition of hit list, cause I do know somebody that ended up on a hit list. Um, where, you know, I'm just wondering if we can expand that just a bit, because, you know, it talks about, uh, list of people targeted to be harmed using a firearm, knife, or other object.
Mr. Rosenthal, can you give us a page number?
Oh, I'm sorry, page thirty-three. It's in the, it's in the glossary, I guess, of terms. So it says knife or any other object to, to be used with the intent to cause bodily harm. And I, I don't know, I'm just thinking that, could it also be just a hit list of somebody to target on social media or something like that, because, I mean, you know, that's kinda where we're at, and, you know, we know where that ends up, or could end up. So just maybe think about that, and. Yeah, and these were the recommended.
Yeah, and these were the recommended changes, but we can certainly entertain that and add to that definition.
Yeah, words, I mean, see if you think that, you know, makes sense, but.
Did you have another comment? Once again, good work. Thank you very much. Next, review of proposed international travel by the Dulles High School Theater students to travel to Edinburgh, Scotland, and participate in the two thousand nineteen American High School Theater Festival.
I have a child in the audience who would like to go with them.
He's gonna transfer to Dulles High School. Right. Could we, could we pay to attend if? Let's see here. Next, six E, review revisions to local board policy, CFC. Questions or comments? Next, board policy, GKA, GKA, community relations. Next, board policy, GKD, community rail, relations, non-school use of school facilities. All right, next, six F, review the proposed approval of chapter forty-one status for two thousand eighteen nineteen. Mr. Rice.
Mr. Bassett, is it, is it my understanding, I, I haven't read through this, but five hundred fourteen thousand dollars, that is for tier one. That's the recapture threshold.
Five hundred fourteen thousand is, that's correct.
We're at, am I reading that right? We're at four hundred two thousand eight sixteen.
Right, that's, that's a number that moves, you know, frequently depending on, you know, our student population and, and so, but that's a good approximation for now. Yes, sir. So, we're still quite a bit below.
Okay, uh, all right, very well. We're, we're in recapture, but we're not subject to recapture payments. We're in chapter forty-one. We're not subject to recapture.
That, that's a better way to state it.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. R- okay. Mr. Rice, could you say that again, that last comment that you made?
We're, we're in chapter forty-one, not yet subject to recapture.
Sir, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, I, I don't have it opened, but um, from reading it, so um, so as Mr. Rice said, we're in that range. Um, but there was something that I was a little confused about. It talked about uh, your tax at a dollar six with a maximum of a dollar seventeen. So, I mean, is a dollar six the max we're allowed to go, or, I mean, I, I.
The dollar si- dollar six where we're at now
Right.
is the highest we can go without recapture.
So, if we were to raise that, where, raise our taxes a penny, we're all of a sudden, that, that, does that automatically make us?
We would have some recapture, not for the whole tax rate, just on that penny. Okay?
So, yeah. I mean, if, if anyone wants to understand how crazy this thing is, school fire, read, read that paragraph. There's a couple of pages because it's insane.
It really, honestly, I mean, you're, you're exactly right. It does get really complicated when you start talking about all the chapter forty-one scenario.
It ju- I mean, it doesn't even make sense. You can buy weighted average credits, but you don't have to pay for it.
Right, we're buying, we're purchasing attendance credits that we're not paying for, yeah. And we have to take board action to, to do it. So, I mean, this is the third year, this is the third, actually, I think, the third or fourth year that we're doing this agenda item. And it's not any easier to understand each year. So, I, I mean, I'm sorry. Thank you. Up next, uh, review the proposed revisions to local board policy, DC local employment practices. Next, board policy, local EHBAF, special education, video and auto, audio monitoring. Next, review proposed approval of a contract for benefits management consulting services. Next, review proposed approval of a contract for Cisco Smart Net products and services. Next up, review the proposed approval of contract for Microsoft Premier Support Services. Next, review proposed purchases exceeding fifty thousand dollars. Awards, school spirit, products, and related items. Signs, banners, related items and services. And last, Mr. Rosenthal, diesel and unleaded fuel. All right. We do not have any action items this evening, so we are now going to, to move to audience items. Each audience member signed up will have a three minutes to speak. Mr. Rosenthal will keep the time and will let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining. First up is Mrs. Tammy Moreno.
Hey, everyone. So, you probably heard from me enough today for like a lifetime. But given the discussion that just took place, I think it's necessary to clarify some things that is being miscommunicated somewhere along the line. Um, first of all, I have three identified GT kids. Two are identified in all four subject areas. One is identified in two areas. The one who's identified in two areas only receives services in the two areas in which he is identified, which is how GT delivery and Fort Ben ISD has historically been working. That is why the GT Task Force drafted the reassessment piece of policy to say that reassessment in non-identified areas would be permissible. Because in order then to get services in those other areas where you're not identified, you need to reassess and become identified. So, that's just a point of clarification. I'm wondering who would have removed the learning opportunities piece that we drafted from policy? We drafted it with the, the GT admin team. Um, and my understanding is that they gave it to uh, Innovation, I think, was the committee, uh, Committee of Innovation, who looked at it the way it was seen. So, I'm not sure where it got lost in the shuffle, but I'd really like clarification on that cause I want to know why it was pulled. The, none of the language in our version of policy was prescriptive or procedural. In fact, I just looked at the ESL board policy and that's prescriptive and procedural. We still kept it broad enough that there was much room for interpretation and much room for how the services were delivered. But I think it's critical, given how often things change hands in this district. I mean, I'm looking at our E-team and it's fairly new. Um, I think it's critical to have policy that lays it out very clearly so that administrators at the campus level know what they're looking at. Also, to be clear, regs have already been drafted. Regs, EHBBR is drafted and finalized. We were told the deadline was June first. So, that's done and should be in all of your hands. EEAR, which is the instructional, instructional arrangements piece, has also been drafted and finalized and delivered. And we were under the impression every step of the way that this information was time sensitive and we were on deadlines and we pushed through to make it happen. And I continually sent emails asking questions about what the status was. And I was constantly told that everything was moving along the way it was supposed to, but it clearly was not. And I'm getting very emotional because I have three GT kids. I have a seven-year-old who I have not yet tested and who I will not test until Fort Ben ISD gets GT right. Because none of my kids are getting any kind of GT services that are worth anything. So, I hope this will be clarified and I'm open to meeting with the board separately and showing you all of the emails and all of the documentation on SchoolAGI that really reflects the task force's work and what we were told along the way and how it's been completely misconstrued on the flip side.
Thank you, Mrs. Moreno. Next is Angie Hanan. Hannan, excuse me.
Thank you, Board President, Board of Trustees, Dr. Dupree. Um, I have worked um, very hard um, with the task force and um, like you said, my name is Angie Hannan. I have a daughter in, going into seventh grade at the Quell Valley uh, GT Academy. Um, I am happy to say this is her first year since kindergarten. She has received appropriate challenging instruction. And challenging is one of the words that was removed, I guess, because it is too prescriptive um, from the philosophy statement that was submitted by uh, the task force. I want to give you a little bit of background on the task force because there seems to be some disconnect as to the work the task force is doing or did this past year and then what is trickling down to you. Um, I'm hearing tonight a lot about um, individualized GT plans. Um, there were multiple subcommittees and that just simply isn't one of the big pieces that rings a bell. Um, we were charged from September through March for writing subcommittee recommendations. There are administrators in here that were on that committee, lots of parents, students, campus administrators. Uh, we all worked hard and drafted recommendations for program improvement. They were detailed, they were research-based, they had, you know, bibliographies a mile long on each one of them. I'm hoping that you actually received those in the, the format that they were submitted to um, the, the administrators we were working under. Um, we were then asked at the end of March uh, to work with our hair on fire to draft policy, EHBB. Um, and again, EHBBR and EEAR, which we all did. Um, not the entire committee, it was those of us who are very committed in trying to get our kids uh, appropriate challenging instruction commensurate to their level of ability and their level of identification. So, um, again, I'm with Tammy in that it would be interesting to me to get some clarifications to, to see, do, have you really heard or seen what the actual work we're doing? Because I have all the documents on SchoolAGI here, in addition to the documents that I always save to my own files. Um, we had submitted three-year plans. I'm hoping you saw those um, in our recommendations. They included detailed things down to very specific information about um, acceleration plans, which was part of the learning opportunities because we feel just as underachievers or struggling students deserve the opportunity to accelerate.
I'm sorry, I missed the thirty-second deadline, so.
Oh, that's okay. Um, we, we think our kids should be afforded the same type of instruction. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much. Up next is Melanie Embarchi.
Hello, um, members of the board, Dr. Dupree and administrative staff. I agree with Tammy and many of the others. I kind of gave up on GT. I have two kids identified as GT and I moved out of the district to go to a, another school, but they had a bunch of really bad issues going on there as well. So, I came back and I just told myself that my kids were just gonna have to make do and they weren't gonna get what they needed. But that was reality, that was life and they'd go past high school and they'd be fine. We'll work it out. But it really is something that I think you all care about and I hope that you can fix because other kids deserve that chance. Um, what, that's not what I was wanting to speak about. Actually, tonight I um, wanted to speak to you about the um, the audit, because I have a few concerns I'd like to share. I think over recent months, the community confidence in the data driving the decisions being made regarding the bond has kind of wavered. And I think that's why the board asked for, many in the community were looking, and many in the community were looking forward to seeing a truly independent audit of the actual design and functional capacity. And while um, PBK may have done a fine job of confirming the data set provided, I don't think the community can see them as truly independent when they stand to gain by appeasing the district in order to obtain other products or projects. In addition, the principals cannot be considered truly independent because they're obliged to make it work. I've talked to many principals in the past and they, they're like, whatever comes our way, we're gonna make it work. So, how is that an independent audit? And I know you guys want those numbers because that's what's driving the decisions. Another concern is that, that wasn't addressed and maybe I just got it wrong, but why was the design capacities changed in the first place in two thousand thirteen? Um, whether those numbers are actually valid, was that ever investigated? I'm worried about that because if we use that as the baseline, those should be valid numbers. I'm concerned that we're normalizing overcrowding by equating a seven hundred square foot classroom with an eight hundred and forty square foot classroom and unfairly penalizing communities with older schools. Treating these classrooms as equal is not equitable. When you have twenty-five kids in a two hundred and forty square foot classroom and twenty-five in a two hundred and forty squ- or an eight hundred and forty square foot classroom, it's just not the same. And while it may take a lot more time to actually provide the equitable square foot calculations, that's what we need to comply with the profile of the graduate. And unfortunately, right now, it just doesn't appear to be the case. I think we need to do a better job with this critical component that drives many major decisions. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mrs. Tolson.
Yes, I just had a comment. I want to go back to the, the GT policy that we were discussing earlier. I'm, along with the board members sitting around this table, pushed very hard for change in special education in this district because we were doing a miserable job of it. And I was one of the parents who endured that for many years. And I just want to stress that equally, we need to get it right for our gifted students. And so, I just want to say, as we are drafting this policy and as we're drafting these procedures, that I certainly, and I know that we have people around this table who care very much about it, but I really want to make sure that everyone understands that, that we expect this program to meet the needs of our children. And so, I've experienced a lot of the same things with my gifted child and I don't have a law to fight for her like I do for my child with special needs. And so, I just wanted to say that because I want to make sure, we, you know, we're absolut- we absolutely need to stay out of the weeds with policy, but I absolutely want to make sure that we're doing everything we possibly can to make this right for our children going forward. And it's gonna be critically important that we listen and listen hard and actually implement what these parents are asking for. So, I just wanted to say that in the context of the policy discussion and the procedure discussion we were having earlier.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Tolson. Mrs. James?
Yeah, and I want to say thank you, Mrs. Tolson, for saying that. I, I feel like um, there were some things brought up. I, I don't, I think we need to understand what all the, all the different pieces are. And I guess, I, I, Dr. Dupree, I guess I'd ask if we can better understand what the, what the charge of the committee, the task force has been, what they've produced and how that fits into what we're trying to work on. Because there's no sense us rushing to put this policy through if it's not um, meeting our needs really. So, I, I guess I would just comment on that, that we need to kind of get better understanding of the whole story. It's feel like there's some pieces that we're not aware of and Dave and I were working on it.
Cause I mean, I think Ms. Moreno made a comment that there was some, the word quality or something like that was scratched from the
Challenging.
Challenging. Cause I, I'm looking at the red line version and maybe I don't even, we don't even have that version, so. And that's kind of what we started with, so, you know.
I think, I think we need to see the work of the committee in order to draft an appropriate policy. And so, um, it sounds like our policy committee was not utilized in the way that they should have been utilized, which means that they should have been given that work in order to determine what would and would not go into policy. Cause we as a board rely on that. That was the whole purpose of establishing the policy committee. And um, and they're relying on what's given to them, so. Uh, it sounds like we need to, we need to s- look at that before, before. It sounds like we need to, we need to look at that before, before I can vote on it.
Thank you for your comments. Can we bring that full circle?
Yeah, I'd like to just interject. I think there's a, I mean, as we've heard, there's a lot of, um, conversation about this, and we've seen the emails today. But I also, I think, and Mr. Rosenthal referenced this, there's a lot of the work that the, the task force and the committees have done that would not come to the board, because it is management-level work. It's work that's gonna govern our plans that we're going to implement. So, all the work they've done is valued, is being used, and will be used. In light of the, because, Ms. Tosin, I want to go back to what you said. Every time I speak of the GT work, I reference the special ed work, because I wanted to have the same level of quality and leadership that we've seen on the special education side. Because I, we, we all, I know I, Deanna and Joe both share my, my expectation that we will serve our GT students with the same level of care that any student. We want to push them, help them achieve their full potential. And so, that's what this is about. And we recognize all the gaps that have been out there. So, I think one of the, in, in many ways, this hearkens back to some of the conversations we had with the Shack a while back. In that, you know, there was a group of committed parents who were engaged in this work. And we, and we were not making all the communication connections that needed to be made to make sure they felt valued and understood how their work was being used. So, I think, I would say, and I, I don't want to misspeak, but I think the committee, the policy committee did have, they, the first drafts they considered did have a lot of the work reflected in it. Now, that's not gonna align with the red line version, because the red line version is the most current version of policy moved forward to the most current changes. So, their, their work was not discounted or set aside on any level. It was considered, and I think we've talked through that, Ms. James and Mr. Rosenthal, addressed how they determined. So, I, to me, the policy we have is a strong policy, um, with a few things that you've referenced tonight that we may, you asked us to look at. I, the key, as with anything we do, as Mr. Rosenthal mentioned, is execution and the accountability and us having the procedures in place. And so, you know, that's where we've now got to engage the members of the committee, to bring them to the table, to really work through the procedures, the implementation, and all of those things. I'm trying to remember, because it's, it's past ten o'clock. I don't, we, I know it's been on our list to do a GT update for the board on all of this work, and I'm not sure that we've, we've put that on the agenda. And so, really, that's on our timeline, so we were wanting to get this policy done, because we wanted to launch into a lot of this work this year. But, uh, in the next few months, we will do a full update on all of the work that's been performed over the last year, so the board can see where we've been and where we're going.
So, I, thank you for that. Um, I'm gonna disagree a little bit, because number one, I, I know that it, we haven't been given an update, and with special ed, we were given pretty regular updates. I think before we can write policy, then maybe we need to have an update. Because the update's going to impact policy and what the board feels needs to be in policy, I would think. I don't know what the policy committee was given and what they weren't, but it's, GT is different, because there are laws in special education. And so, certain things have to be in policy because of the laws that are in place. GT's a little bit, is different, because there aren't laws that drive it, but there are a lot of best practices that drive it. And so, not all of us sitting around this dais or this table are gonna know what those best practices are. But I could always, as a special education attorney, look at the policy or look at whatever was in front of me and say, this is right, this is wrong, pretty easily, where I don't feel as, as equipped to do that for GT. So, I just want to throw that out there as a board member. I know maybe everything doesn't need to come to us, but I don't know that I feel, um, I don't, I don't feel like I have been given the information I need in order to make a decision on this policy. And so, maybe we are putting the cart before the horse by not getting the update before we're actually asked to vote on policy. So, that's just my two cents on that. But I, I do think that there are things that, information that we need to be given in order to be able to make, um, an intelligent and informed decision on what this policy should look like. The other thing I will say lastly is that I've been kind of involved with a lot of the parents on this, um, Special Education Advisory Committee. And so, I, I hear feedback and I'm able to give that to you pretty regularly. I don't hear that feedback as much one-on-one from those on the GT Advisory Committee. So, um, and I'm just saying that, because I think anytime we, as board members, get feedback, we share that with you. And this may be the way we're getting this feedback, instead of the one-on-one. So, it's something I would have shared with you anyway, and I would have said, hey, we need to see what's going on, or we need a memo, or something along those lines. So, um, it's maybe a little bit different, because it's, it's now public, but, but, you know, that's kind of the way this one, this one went. And so, I, just as of now, I would like to get that information.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal, you have a comment?
Yeah, so, I think maybe at this point, we've, we've gotten some comments. Maybe we can, you guys can take some of the information that we've heard and, and Grail and I can, can maybe take a, we can reassemble and see what else we can incorporate based on some of the conversation here tonight. Again, I still think it needs to be broad. When we saw that, I'm, I'm telling you, there were, there were stuff that was, it was in the weeds. It was procedural. Uh, it may, it may, it, the ESL may have been procedural too, but I don't even think we've, we've, we haven't gotten to that, and that's legal too. There are, there are legal requirements. So, um, I mean, there were, there were things that it, that, when we both read it, it was like, this is procedure. And we have to be really careful about that, so. But let's take another look and see, you know, if there's, if there's some things that we can do to improve it, to, to make people happy, then, you know, and, and make it more sound, then, then I'm fine with spending more time on it, so.
Thank you for your willingness to do that. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn. Second.
Meeting is adjourned.